It all boils down to the body shame.
Mine better not be, everyone.
I don't know what we're saying.
Because if it is, you know me, I'll handle it.
Me too.
Oh, no, here, we saved it there.
That was the plan.
We're recording whenever you guys ready.
Okay. Amy, are you ready, sweetheart?
No, it's not, it's not right.
I'm sorry, Mayor, would you like to have a meeting?
It's on the calendar that we should have a meeting. And you gave me 200 pages plus to read, so I'm loving it.
We went for you.
We are running two minutes behind.
So I'd like to call to order the City of Perkins regular meeting February 13th, 2024 at 6:01. P E Tim, Amy, go call.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
All right, let's stand for prayer, I know I need it. Heavenly Father, we just come to you now, we just thank you again for this beautiful day that you've given us. Father, I pray for wisdom and discernment tonight as we make decisions that will benefit the people of this city and this community. You know all of our hearts and you know that we're here because of that. And I pray that you continue to bless our staff and our police officers and our environment, and I pray that you bless this meeting tonight and all those in attendance, in Jesus' precious name, amen. Okay, tonight we have a special guest. We have Commissioner Henneger's son, Jamison, and they are gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Are you ready, Jamison? You wanna go down there? Or you wanna stay right here? Wherever you're comfortable, buddy.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jamison? Could we get a picture with you and your dad at the flag, real quick? Okay. Uh, Bob, could you take that? Face. There you go. Good job. Thank you, Jamison.
Smile.
Good job, buddy.
Commissioner Henneger, thank you, it's about time someone else got a picture. Item number four, consideration and action on consent agenda. I make a motion that we remove item number G, or letter G, approval of budget amendment, general fund, emergency management, June 2023 storm cleanup. All expenses have been submitted to FEMA and should be reimbursed at some future time.
Rachel?
Oh, yeah.
Do I?
We'll have to move on to the next.
Yes, moving on to item agenda number five. Do we need to prove the other ones first?
We need to move to remove it, don't we? First, and then we confirm.
So you moved to remove?
Yes.
You moved to remove, we need a second.
Great, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
I'm gonna motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of G, item G, if you want to do that.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus G.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Number five, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda, staff report.
Yes, so I asked that this be removed because I had planned that we were gonna use priority carry forward to cover all the expenses which came in in the June, June 2023 storm in fiscal year 24, after January 1. Knowing that FEMA would at some point send us some amount of money, I don't know, and usually it takes six, eight, 10, 14, two years, you never know when it's gonna show up. We just had money from 2020 show up last September, we had another $1,600, so you never know. Yesterday, we got $18,911 from FEMA. So I didn't wanna do this, only to turn around and undo it and do something different. So I would recommend that you just not take any action, and next month I'll bring you a budget amendment where we use FEMA money instead of our money.
And we received that 18,000 because our emergency management director, Eric Lovelace, did a fabulous job with FEMA in getting the, it's no small task to deal with a federal agency that large.
I heard that this past weekend, that there's a lot of municipalities that struggle getting that money, so that's a true blessing. Appreciate you, Eric.
Good job.
All right, no action. Item agenda number six, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items that are not on today's agenda. Before I move on to number seven, did you guys sign in? Right, right before you come in. You're welcome. That way it doesn't interrupt.
Thank you, so sorry.
Bless you.
I'm gonna go ahead and read the next part while they're doing that. Item agenda number seven, public hearing regarding the site plan for Beasley's Technology Incorporated, a franchise of Dunkin' Donuts franchising LLC, property generally located on the 300 to 400 block of East Highway 33. Staff report.
Yeah, you're gonna open the public hearing?
But, um, I'm by my, she gave me a staff report first.
Nothing specific for the public hearing.
Okay, and we know that the applicant is present?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to approach the podium? Please state your name and address.
My name's Jeffrey Beasley, representing Beasley Technology and also Build It LLC, 1030 East 13th Street, Cushing, Oklahoma, 74023.
Does the commissioners have any questions for speaker?
This looks great.
Would you like to say anything?
Sure, we're excited to get started. We have our permit ready to submit. Last week, we went through the planning commission and answered questions about our site layouts. As you guys can see, we've been really busy and we've, we're taking on a lot more than we originally, originally intended, which we're excited about. We have three tenant spaces, 1,650 square foot each, in addition to Dunkin' Donuts, which I think is around 2,500 square feet. 7,500 square foot total footprint. We are still flying through, looking to meet our deadline by the new year. I trust that if we're close and we don't make it, that we can, we can make a little 30-day or 60-day extension to get over that deadline, because we really wanna make sure we engage in the sales tax incentive. Our deadline from Dunkin', where we lose a lot of money from Dunkin', is June of 2025. And so I've gotta have Perkins and Cushing fully operational, no matter what, by then. So we're far, we're way, way ahead of that, but we kept our deadlines really close to, to be motivating in the right direction, so. So we're really excited, and we've worked well with Williams, you'll see a new Williams sign, there's cross-access with Williams that I'm excited about. So yeah, we're looking, looking really good. I've got our water figured out, been working with city manager, Mr. Ernst, and we're gonna be tying into that earlier line, which is gonna give the city some opportunity to hopefully make a full loop, so there's all kinds of positive things going on, so.
The length of the drive-through seems a little long, but I think it's gonna relieve up the traffic on Highway 33.
That's, that's our hope, so.
Keeps it off 33.
That's right.
And you answered my question about the west entrances, you're sharing that room right that pull in with the Williams?
Yes.
That's what I was.
The center entrance is created in such a way that the northeast quadrant, we kinda, last time we met, we talked about quadrants, and so we're, we're filling out the northwest quadrant, deeper than I wanted, but it's because of the multiple tenants, I had to go deep, and that's what makes that drive so long. They wanna see 14 to 20 cars and be able to, be able to be serviced, and it shows a dual, it shows dual service, there's only gonna be single service up front until we can do proof of point, you know, proof of concept. It's probably another $75,000 to add the additional signage and all the other stuff to activate that second lane, and I thought, man, that's, that doesn't seem to be very smart until we see the traffic, the true traffic coming through. But, all the physical side's done, so there's no regrets, which is good.
So what's on the north side?
North, the northeast side is a blank lot, and that's what we're recording, Brahms, Arby's, Wendy's, something, you know, something there. The northwest is us, and then the southern is currently slated for high-end mini storage, possibly, could also be housing, we're, we're open-minded, so if you guys have ideas that you wanna stay on the backside of the land, you know, we wanna be a team player and work with you guys.
Directly north, is there, is there entranceway directly north, is that offset?
I got you. On the other side of the road? I'm not sure, I don't know the answer, but I can find out.
Okay. I'm just curious as far as traffic, if it was like.
That was my question there on the northeast, and it's not a holdup, it's a curiosity question, is, is that offset from the entrance to the, the mini strip east entrance? Is it offset from that, or is it square from it? You see what I'm saying from it? Because I think that could be a, especially if there's more to come on the east side, that could be a source of a.
Imagine it being.
Traffic intersection, we already have one down the road in Lover's Lane, so I was just curious as to where that was.
If I had a computer handy, I could, I could get the aerial really fast, because I'm, I'm so used to where the property lines are, even from an aerial view, because all you have to do is look for that drainage ditch, that's your eastmost, the big drainage, that's your easternmost property line, and then pop over to Williams, and then just go dead center, right? So go dead center on those two properties, and that, that tells you exactly where that's at. Oh, it also, you know how the, the lane kinda tightens right there about mid-property? It's right, right there in that area, so, yeah. The engineer liked it, he was real happy with the way that that turned out, so.
Is my only question. I do like the extra room on the drive-through.
Me too. I hope that it gives us an opportunity to have a multitude of tenants, you know, different opportunities that could come up there, and it doesn't have to be 1,650 per tenant, so yes, it's 1,650, 1,650, 1,650, but it could easily be 2,000 and smaller, right? We can go in and to the left, multiple ways, or even have a really high-end end cap.
Use the whole thing for.
Use the whole thing for one big entity, yeah.
Just throwing it out there.
Go rate us to go.
I'm just throwing it.
I think it ends up remaining empty for very long, I'll probably be tempted to put a Jimmy John's in there, just franchise it, you know?
I love you, Ms. John.
I think that might be a good backup plan, but it'd be good, right? They don't do, they don't typically do drive-throughs, so it would make sense to put that on one of the interior options.
Really, the, the length of the drive-through has really helped my thoughts of Highway 33.
I brought Christopher Flat with me today, he's with CNR Construction, he is our general contractor, so.
State, I'm sorry. Follow her. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
It's Christopher Flat, with CNR Construction, 1523 Cedar Ridge Place, Cushing, Oklahoma, 74023.
Will speak to us, sir.
Just hoping for a good, smooth project, and everything to go up smooth, and work together with everybody.
So from here, where do, what's your next step?
Water. Water and land.
Water and dirtwork, water.
Commissioners, anybody have anything?
You expect it to start?
So we're in motion now, we're pushing on the civil engineering, and I did speak to Stephen today, and they're very, very close. He said it won't be ready today, but we're really close, so I wouldn't be surprised we had it within the next 48 hours even, so.
What'll happen is, not to interrupt, but he'll submit his civil plans, including drainage, to the city, and then we'll submit them to our engineering for review and comment, and then there's, may or may not be back and forth between the two engineers. Once our engineer is satisfied, fire marshal is satisfied, things like that, then the building permit will be issued.
Okay.
Once, once we're, once we start digging, and we're, and we're all in motion, I think we should probably look at that, that true timeline, because we'll know materials, we'll know all kinds of things, and if we're flirting too close, I'll probably go, I'll probably go to Mr. Ernst and say, hey, will you go to the commission and ask for a 60-day extension, or whatever we need to make sure that we are in that window, so that we don't get to the end of the race and go, wow, we completed the race, but we lost, so.
Another thing I wanted to bring up, and he, he alluded to it a little bit, is water. He's bringing water from, we did a crossing under Highway 33, kind of by Sonic, several years ago, a few years ago, and that crossing is a huge supply of water pressure and everything with the power on the north side, so he's gonna tie into that valve and bring water to his property, and he has offered to allow the city to partner and turn that, get the water so it attaches into the Kinder Wells addition, so we have a second, that was the original intent when we did the crossing, so we'll have a, another loop that'll supply basically the whole east side of town, so that's not, we haven't negotiated anything, but I don't think it'll be a, a difficult thing to negotiate, and he's being kind enough to allow us to partner to do that using his property.
I think it's good for everybody, though, because at the end of the day, if, if one side breaks, then I, then I have backup too, so it's, it's good for everybody involved. It's a big piece of property to come across, right? It's 400 feet deep, so, yeah. So it's definitely a commitment for everybody involved, and it'll be, the end game will be really beneficial.
So, commissioners, any comments? Staff?
We're completely satisfied and would recommend approval.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, we're, we're looking forward to it, and I just wanna express gratitude, and thank y'all for welcoming us and making us part of your community, so.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I'm gonna close for a public comment, and if there's nothing else from the commissioners, I make a motion that, that we close the public hearing, that's what's next, right?
Oh, you don't have to have a motion, you can just.
They just close it?
It says motion, okay, nevermind.
It does?
Yeah, it does.
I'll fix it, I'm sorry.
Okay. I was just following the rules. All right, item agenda number eight, consideration discussion and possible action regarding the site plan for Beasley Technology Incorporated, a franchise of Dunkin' Donuts franchising LLC, on property generally located on the 300 to 400 block of East Highway 33, as recommended by the planning commission on February 8th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for Beasley Technology, franchise of Dunkin' Donuts franchising LLC on property generally, generally located at the 300 or 400 block of East Highway 33, as recommended by the planning commission on February 8th, 2024.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
After this, after everything changes, that's when we. Item agenda number nine, consideration discussion and possible action to appoint operations and purchasing officer, special projects manager, emergency management director, Eric Lovelace, to act as a standing proxy for city manager Bob Ernst at the meetings of the Central Oklahoma Economic Development District, or COED.
This is just to ensure that we always have representation at the COED meetings. I'm able to make about 90% of them, and then Chief Barta is proxy, and we had an instance where either he or I could make it, and so having Eric would just give us a third level.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all. Y'all mayor. So we would recommend approval.
Yes, I am. Anybody else have any comments? I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
I make a motion to appoint operations and purchasing officer, special projects manager, emergency management director, Eric Lovelace, to act as a standing proxy for city manager Bob Ernst at the meetings of the Central Oklahoma Economic Development District, or COED.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Item agenda number 10, consideration discussion and possible action to approve a letter of participatory commitment from the City of Perkins to the Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma, Perkins Family Clinic Behavioral Health Department, in support of its application for the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration Program Strategic Prevention Framework Partners for Success for communities, local governments, universities, colleges, and tribes, tribal organizations. So, Bob, I'm sure has something to say as well.
Yeah, this is a, more of our partnership with the Iowa Tribe, it revolves around mental health. I'm currently a member of a group, they call it a consortium on, on mental health with the tribe, the mayor's in the group, and we meet periodically to discuss getting services to people, and this would basically, it's basically the same group that's gonna, in reference to this grant, but they asked for a letter for the grant application that we work together, and we will continue to do so, which we will.
So I, I'm, like Bob said, I'm, I'm on the gray snow consortium, and there's a Zoom meeting every month, and sometimes I can make it, and sometimes I can't, because it's right during the end of my workday, but Ashley Taylor approached myself and Bob to continue this partnership on a different grant, and this grant will continue to promote the prevention of substance abuse issues, which is near and dear to my heart. It will help bridge the gaps between the communities, and she let me know that this grant is based on prevention, but it's going to target a different age group than the other grant targeted. And the grants that, the, the groups that Bob and I are already a part of, well, at least the one I'm a part of, is part of the one that gets the Narcan and the Fentanyl strips for free and hands them out to, I know they give them to our police department, so I think this is a, a, a good partnership that I would like to see continued, and Bob plays a huge role in the mental health issues that are going on in within our community and the substance abuse that he and his officers face on a daily basis.
And it fits directly into our strategic plan.
Yes, it does.
Partnering with the tribe and continuing that partnership.
Good point, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter particip, participation commitment from the City of Perkins to the Iowa Tribe, Oklahoma, Perkins Family, connect behavioral health department, in support of its application for substance abuse, mental health services administration, urgent strategic prevention framework, partnerships for success for communities, local government, universities, colleges, and troubled organizations. I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Awesome. Number 11, consideration discussion and possible action to approve agreement with Mears Engineering LLC to complete a technical memorandum for a new water meter system at a cost of $2,750, utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds.
This is a, the technical memo, so we can attempt to leverage funding through the state revolving funds, this is required to pursue a water meter system. He has sent a document, a preliminary document, at the estimated cost, this is all the supporting documentation that we would submit, water resources board, DEQ, depending on which way we go.
Well, this, this will help us possibly get grants if we've got this.
It's possible.
Kind of funding at all?
We, we, you, you're not gonna be able to get state revolving fund, funding without it, and that's generally heavily funded, because they have, from time to time, they have principal forgiveness funds available through the form of a grant. I think that, since it's a water meter system, you can fund it through the drinking water state revolving fund, which is through DEQ, or you can fund it through the clean water state revolving fund, which actually deals with septic, so I don't personally think it's clean water, that's how they view it, but there's, there's, there's a caveat on the clean water state revolving fund, they're gonna have projects coming up, I think in Oct, in July, where they're gonna have a possibility, possibility of a million and a half dollars in principal forgiveness, but it must be used at a wastewater treatment plant if there's a consent order from DEQ, and we will fall into that, so that method of funding is out as far as their principal forgiveness. The drinking water is a possibility, they won't have any principal forgiveness until October, and that may depend on the congressional budget, on whether or not they can make, come to an agreement.
Right. And same company that did the water sustainability study, so.
Yes.
Will hopefully help.
Yep.
In his job, okay. Commissioners, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Mears Engineering LLC to complete the technical memorandum for a new water meter system at a cost of $2,750, using the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Number 12, consideration discussion and possible action to approve 2022-2023 Rural Economic Action Plan Fund, number 2022-2023-37, contract closeout certification, certification, and affidavit of non-conclusion and verification for payment for emergency generators at the Sonic and the Am Pride water wells.
We are, the generators are installed, at Sonic and Am Pride, they're functional. This is closeout documents, so we can close it out at COED, and it will make us eligible to apply for the REAP grant again. A year from now.
October, this, this October?
Or October, yeah, well, next fiscal year, this calendar year in October, we could apply, assuming funding will be there from the feds.
Commissioners, any questions? Comments?
Right, we're just.
Make a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Rural Economic Action Plan Fund, number 2022-2023-37, contract closeout certification and affidavit of non collusion and verification of payment for emergency generators at the Sonic and Am Pride water wells.
One second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Number 13, consideration discussion and possible action to approve resolution, resol, goodness, resolution 1-23. goodness, resolution 1-2024, a resolution providing for building, tap, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, zoning, flat, administrative, and/or inspection fees.
Well, then Amy handled the bulk of this, but we, it's been quite a while since we had a comprehensive review of our fees and compared them to other cities. Amy did a very good job with that, so I'll let her talk about it.
You know, Amy, I did a, I did a highlighted side by side from the previous one, thank you for including that, they were good at understanding what was going on, you did a very good job.
Thank you.
Because even I could understand it.
Good. Do you guys have any questions? No, thank you so much.
Thank you for doing the research and making sure that we're, it sounded like we're like a lot lower than a lot of other communities around us.
We are, I compared several cities, compared Bartlesville, Edmond, Al Reno, Guthrie, Stillwater, so some larger cities and some smaller cities, and tried to balance out, you know, the rate at which we're growing, also compared to some of those cities that are larger than us, and because it's been so long, 2018, since we updated these fees last, I think it's a better balance for the rate that we're growing. We issued in October through December, we issued eighty-nine permits, and then in January, we issued twelve, fourteen of those total have been new residential builds.
Okay.
So you guys see how fast we're building and growing?
Right.
And some of these fees we didn't previously have, especially the planning fees, and so as we grow, that will help us recoup some costs that we otherwise would be paying a lot of these things.
I get it. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Make a motion to approve resolution 1-2024, a resolution providing for building, tap, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, zoning, flat, administrative, and/or inspection fees.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Number fourteen, consideration discussion and possible action to approve contract with Shan Stone Masonry LLC for masonry work project, including wainscot and pillars on the north side of the new library building, as recommended by the Perkins Library Trust, at a total project cost of $20,750.
Give us just a second.
I do, Sean.
Hi, Shannon.
So there were, the wrong plans were put in the packet initially. The contract refers to a set of plans day-to-date. I heard from two of you yesterday evening questioning that, which was very astute because I had missed it. So when I came in, I was able to get the correct plans, and I sent them out, and it's this set from three-level design that the library trust paid for last year, two years ago, almost, year and a half ago. When I was looking at them and sending them out, they do have a scope of work for the EPHAS system and the masonry. However, there's a stamp on this set that says "not for construction," because, and that's a common thing in this business, because until they've completed a total set of plans and been paid, that's their hammered, not stamped on. So I think what we would recommend is moving forward with approval based on an acceptable contract from the city attorney, by the city attorney, see if we can word that contract a little bit differently, because I would hate to get into a situation where we hire a contractor to do something, and then there's a question, the contractor has a question, and we would refer to the drawings, and if the drawings, sometimes, it's hard to believe, but sometimes architects and engineers make mistakes, and now we don't have this architect anymore, so we can't really call them to, for guidance. So I would be a little bit leery to get into that situation, so what we would ask, or what I would ask, is for approval of the expense pending satisfactory agreement by the city attorney.
Approval of a contract.
So then we'd come back at a later date to sign that?
You would come back in at a later date to sign it.
But this would be approved.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it would be very, very close to what is in your packet. It would just refer to different drawings. It would take a little while, Mayor, before you're gonna see that to sign, because we're probably going to have to hire a new architect, so.
The other thing that may happen is the library trust paid for these plans, so we may be able to go back to the architect and say, "We paid you X number of dollars, and you just stamped this," and then we move forward, just with the wall covering and the masonry work.
Masonry work?
But I may not, to get the contract that we would want with this architect. Just tell you I've tried.
Is that still gonna apply to?
Well, that was for their services.
I don't have a road here.
I'm sorry?
Is this same conversation gonna apply to another?
Next one?
Yeah.
Yes.
What you're talking about was, for their services, not.
I don't know. I don't know. Let's see if we can get that to happen. Well, we need some time.
So.
We really contemplated just pulling these, and then we thought, no, if we, no, we're so close.
If we pass, then we gotta wait a whole other month, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we've had, and this is money from the T-Mobile grant?
Correct.
They like to see that money spent in a year?
Yes.
We're there.
We're there.
We're over there.
But we can approve the amount pending a satisfactory contract with the city attorney, and that doesn't need to be approved by us, because we've approved the city attorney.
That at least gives us some leeway.
We approve the city attorney.
Then it may or may not work, but at least we have.
You have leeway to continue forward.
We can try.
If we, for some reason, can't get an approved contract, you haven't approved it, because it's conditioned on.
Then we would just.
And then we might have to see it next month, but.
We'd come back with another one.
If it does get done, then I'll just come in and sign it.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
I'm good with it.
So I make a motion to approve the contract, I make a motion to approve the expense of $20,750.
No.
No.
You're on fourteen, right?
Yeah? That's total cost. You don't want me to say that? I'm sorry?
Fourteen, twenty thousand seven hundred fifty.
She was gonna say pending.
We're on fourteen, the total, you want me to say the total project cost or no?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So I make a motion to approve item number fourteen, with a contract pending with satisfactory overview from the city attorney with Shan Stone's Masonry LLC for the masonry work project, including Wayne Scott and pillars on the north side of the new library building, as recommended by the Perkins Public Library Trust, at a total project cost of $20,750. Do we like, is that better?
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Number fifteen, consideration discussion and possible action to approve the use of T-Mobile grant funding received in fiscal year 2023 for the purpose of exterior wall finishes and building utilities in the amount of $16,130 as partial payment for masonry work project by Shan Stone Masonry LLC, as recommended by the Perkins Public Library Trust, balance of $4,620 to be paid by the Perkins Public Library Trust. So, that's same.
I think it can prove the use of the plans, we just won't, we just won't do a purchase order if we don't have a contract. I think it can prove the use of the plans.
Just to prove it, yeah, motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the use of the T-Mobile grant funding received in fiscal year 2023 for the purpose of exterior wall finishes and building utilities in the amount of $16,130 as partial payment for masonry work project by Shan Stone's Masonry LLC, as recommended by Perkins Public Library Trust, balance of $4,620 to be paid by the Perkins Public Library Trust.
I'll second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
What about this?
Item sixteen, you could just pass.
Can we just pass item sixteen?
That's why I was looking at you. Item Agenda number sixteen, pass. Number seventeen, consideration discussion and possible action to approve contract with Talon Commercial Services to complete exterior insulation and finish systems for northern, southern, and western walls of the new library building at a cost of $33,870, utilizing T-Mobile grant funds received in the fiscal year 2023 for the purpose of exterior wall finishes and building utilities, as recommended by Perkins Public Library Trust. And this one requires, based on a pending contract?
Yes.
Who's got it?
I make.
Approval by the city attorney of the contract.
I make a motion to approve pending satisfactory approval by the city attorney, the contract with Talon Commercial Services to complete exterior insulation and finish systems for northern, southern, and western walls of the new library building at a cost of $33,870, utilizing T-Mobile grant funds received in fiscal year 2023 for the purpose of exterior wall finishes and building utilities, as recommended by the Perkins Public Library Trust.
Second it, oh, sorry, I mean, Justin? You got it. Give it to him.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Number eighteen would be a pass.
No question.
Number nineteen, consideration discussion and possible action to approve purchase of two 2024 Ford Explorer vehicles for police department from Vance Country Ford at the state contract price of $46,218.60 each, total cost of $92,437.20, utilizing public safety sales tax funds.
This would be purchasing them outright, to get two of our twenty thirteen and the twenty fourteen Taurus out of the fleet, and the price is going up pretty drastically this year, so we wanted to purchase two, and what we would basically do is pull a little out of savings and then replenish it in the next fiscal year, which would be after July one, because we don't really know exactly when we're gonna receive them either. We're hoping April-ish.
So the reality is?
They didn't mention which year, so.
Unexpected, that's what we're expecting.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So this is, these are, something being combined, and you're including a capital improvement plan for the police department for 2024, and then looking forward to 2025?
Yes.
Paying it forward, okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve purchase of two 2024 Ford Explorer vehicles for police department from Vance Country Ford at the state contract price of $46,218.60 each, total cost $92,437.20, utilizing public safety sales tax funds.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Consideration discussion and possible action to approve expense to outfit two police vehicles as described in item nineteen above by Quality Custom Upfitters, at a cost not to exceed $36,000, utilizing public safety sales tax funds.
There's a quote included in the packet, Quality Custom Upfitters is a fairly local business, they're located just outside of Stillwater, and local people that I've known nearly all of my life, and we used another vendor previously, which was the dealer. They didn't do a bad job at all, but the timeframe turnaround was horrible, and I think Quality Custom Upfitters can do a little better job for us. This would outfit both vehicles with what we need to make them usable.
They'd do an amazing job, they'd outfit ours as well.
I make a motion to approve expense to outfit two police vehicles as described in item nineteen above by Quality Custom Upfitters at a cost not to exceed $36,000, utilizing public safety sales tax funds.
Second.
Go ahead. Take it.
This is so exciting.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Number twenty-one, consideration discussion and possible action to approve agreement with Saltus Technologies LLC for two-year Digiticket solution service subscription in the amount of $1,000 per month, utilizing public safety sales tax funds.
So this is to move into the 21st century and stop handwriting citations and go digital, and then this will, this does not include, this one thousand a month includes all of the stuff from Digiticket, the equipment, paper, everything, and then there'll be an extra charge, which will be below my spending limit, a few thousand dollars software-wise. So Digiticket can upload directly into our court system, which will stop, because right now we write a, handwrite a ticket, and then Tiffany, the court clerk, gets it, or Ashley, and then they hand, enter it by hand into the system, so we run into handwriting issues, misspelling, human error on officer, and then maybe a clerical error, transposition of numbers by the court clerk, and this will remedy most of that. And it will also speed up the time of contacts, because you can, right now you do one violation per ticket, so if there's two violations that you're gonna cite for, you write two tickets. This will allow up to six violations, I think, on one contact, so.
I'm glad this is finally on the agenda, because I know a few police officers in my lifetime, and they're really surprised that we don't already have this.
Does it by chance go up to the county at all, per county citations?
Uh, I don't know that.
Or do I have to write those by hand?
No, we're not gonna, the goal is not to write anything by hand, but I will get with the court clerk up there and find out what we would need to do to make that happen. The goal would be to, because we don't wanna buy any more ticket books either, you know, or very few to have as a backup.
It saves staff hours, too.
Yeah, saves quite a few staff hours, and the other thing I failed to mention to the mayor is the national sales manager, Corey Box is the mayor in Jinks, Oklahoma, coincidentally, so I found that out, but.
And just to note, this is, this price is for essentially the rental of the equipment, it doesn't purchase it.
Allows it to be updated.
It'll be updated, and then if we.
Quarantined and all of that.
We send it in, as long as it's not something.
Malicious.
Odd, malicious would be a good word.
It's a legal term.
Yeah, so it should be covered.
I make a motion to approve agreement with Saltus Technology. I make a motion to approve agreement with Saltus Technology LLC for two-year Digiticket Solution Service subscription in the amount of $1,000 per month utilizing public safety sales tax funds.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Number twenty-two, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve ordinance number four nine seven in ordinance adding section five dash seven B dash thirteen tethering to Perkins City Code Title Five, Public Safety, Chapter Seven, Animal Control, Article B, Animals in Foul and Declaring an Emergency Staff Report.
This is a, um, an ordinance that Bob and I worked on at the request of, of Sarah, Vice Mayor Sarah. And we looked at other cities, we looked at a bunch of things and kind of came to the conclusion that we like the structure of this ordinance. I will tell you that Bob and I are super comfortable with, with paragraph A, super comfortable with paragraph C, but we've kind of ended up saying, let's just put paragraph B on the agenda, you know, in the, not on the agenda, but in the ordinance and see if you guys, how you feel about it. And I'll just walk through it a little bit. Basically, paragraph A just says it's unlawful to tether for any duration under conditions which may reasonably threaten the health or well-being of an animal. We didn't specify dogs. Some of the ordinances said dog and cat, which is interesting, but then we got to thinking, well, it could be a goat, it could be a, like, pig, it could be other animal, hot pot, I know, pot-bellied pig?
Pot-bellied.
I used to have those for pets, but anyway, it could be something other than a dog or...
Including a squirrel?
A squirrel.
Homesticated.
Different animals.
Sorry, that was...
Squirrel. So, we kind of left that, we felt okay with that. And then we felt okay with the type of the requirements for the safety of the animal that are included in paragraph C. Paragraph B, we kind of went back and forth. This is exactly how Edmund has theirs, but we think, I thought, I want to make sure you're good with it. Says between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00 a.m., it's unlawful for any animal's owner, possessor, or keeper to keep or maintain a non-supervised dog on a tie-out consisting of a rope chain cable or other tether. What we're looking for is conversation on two issues. Number one, do you at all want to have something that just says you can't have them outside between certain hours? And number two, do you want it to apply just to dogs or to other animals as well? Right? Am I saying that right? So, we'll write it however you want to do it.
So, I appreciate staff putting this together. Many other states already have these ordinances and it seems natural as other cities within our area are having these as well. And I read it's the more extreme temperatures happening and just kind of an education of our community of what's acceptable and what isn't when it comes to being a responsible pet owner. Tethering an animal can cause a lot of issues for the animal itself and it can be dangerous. There are certain necessities that people need to have in place before they have an animal. And in, in my, my opinion is that B makes sense to me, that 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. is when the majority of people are asleep, or if you work a graveyard shift, you're not at home. So, that animal would be unsupervised, anything could happen in the middle of the night. We live in an area where there are tornadoes and they could happen in the middle of the night. Now, we're living in a place where there's earthquakes. Having an animal tethered outside restricts its ability to save itself in any kind of imminent threat or danger, let's say environmentally.
Yeah.
What I have to say?
At least if it's outside untethered, it has a chance to escape, escape, crawl under something in a house. This dog owner.
Hi.
You have anything?
No, I agree with what Sarah said.
You and your four fur babies.
Leave my four fur babies alone.
It's great, I love your four baby, fur babies.
They're amazing.
Especially one of them.
I'd almost take it a step further as far as even taking out the tethering, just not being outside between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., especially in winter times.
I mean, I like that. Shannon, do you have anything that you wanted to say?
Um, I would say in the, the paragraph B, we're talking about you got dog on there, animal, I agree with that. The bad thing about not at all being out at, at all at night, not just tether, is because a lot of people have fenced yards for their dogs. And a lot of dogs will not come inside. So, that, that's just where I am right there on that.
Is there a, can we add, we'll have a shelter.
Suitable shelter?
So, the thing about the, some of the bugs, some of the people can't use their animals inside their house, then they probably shouldn't be pet owners. They should be able to control their animals.
True, but we're talking a big, bigger majority than most of us animal lovers here are. Well, and we, I don't have it in front of me, but I think our cruelty to animal or the, the state statute regarding cruelty animals were neglect would cover a situation where somebody leaves an animal out during inclement weather, where it's so too cold for that animal. That would just be straight, you know, neglect or abuse. So, I, I think there would be other charges that could be filed. I would say try to, because this is number thirteen on the list of things in the ordinance regarding animals, and it's called tethering. So, it may be best to...
Just keep it in.
Keep it to tethering. And then if we want to go back and look at our other ordinances to tighten up or change, that's a, that's a good discussion to have.
Should we, can we approve this pending the, the wording of change where it says unsupervised animal?
No, actually, what I would rather do is we just tangle it or continue it to the next, to next month, because it's an ordinance, it's not, it needs to be right when you pass it. And, and to, and right meaning what it is that you intend to...
All right, so.
But let's hold on.
Who, who enforces it?
Shannon.
How many?
And the police department.
Yeah, I, I get that. How many, how many extra calls do you think this is going to add to at the very beginning? Eventually, I think it'll go away, but how much is it going to?
Well, realistically, it would probably be mostly complaint-driven. I don't necessarily see, I mean, I guess an officer could just drive, just notice a dog tethered, but if they're just, during the day, if there's not an issue, if there's not duress or, you know, it's not 120 or five below, I would think it'll be mostly complaint-driven. It may be a little more proactive by the animal control officer where she could, you know...
What did I do to you?
Finger down?
My pin broom.
I have no idea what I was talking about, I'm sorry.
If you've answered my question, thank you.
How, historically, what other animals have we found to be tethered in city limits?
I've never found another animal to be tethered.
Besides a dog?
Unless they're hiding in behind a fence like goats and pigs and...
Well, but I've never seen them tethered of...
Right.
Roaming.
The only thing I say to that is if you just...
Those will hang themselves.
If you, if you don't have it mentioned anywhere else, then it needs to be consistent all over the room. One way or the other.
Shannon, have you ever seen anything else tethered than a dog?
Have you seen a cat tethered?
No.
Like I said, other...
I don't think you're, keep a cat tethered.
Cat.
You could tether one cat.
Only one time I've seen anything put out and that was a goat.
That got tethered?
But that was just where they put him up to the side while they were doing their mowing and then I noticed they had hooked him.
Do we want to leave it at dog or do we want to put animal in there? Just leave the animal uncovered?
I like that.
Okay.
You can't have a dog outside on your property?
We can't do that.
No, and that's not what I'm saying, is in between the, those certain hours, yes, we get the animals that, they have to go outside throughout the night, but I'm looking at as far as, you know, the docking, docking, barking dog complaints.
There's an ordinance for, there's a noise ordinance for that, right?
We do have that in the, in the...
That's another article in this.
I think it really might not be an enforceable ordinance if we said we can't let a dog outside between certain hours.
Well...
Because we do have a lot of fenced-in yards in, in our city.
I respect what you're saying.
I do too, because, but I, I think Vice Mayor is correct, there's other ordinances that cover what you're talking about, but I see it too, especially when it's cold weather.
And that's covered, you know, if the conditions, A covers bad weather that...
Yeah, and it, and it does cover it in the other ordinances, I believe.
Yeah, and it's covered.
Under, under the...
You said neglect.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number four nine seven, an ordinance adding section five dash seven B dash one three tethering to Perkins City Code Title Five, Public Safety, Chapter Seven, Animal Control, Article B, Animals in Foul and Declaring an Emergency.
So, you'd like it the way it's forwarded?
Yes.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Well, Edmund's city council apparently loves it too, so, thank you, Shannon, you're in good company.
Number twenty-three, consideration, discussion, and possible action on declaring an emergency on ordinance four nine seven. Thank you for coming in.
Hi, Shannon.
Hi, Shannon.
I, I make a motion that we declare ordinance four nine seven an emergency.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Number twenty-four, consideration, discussion, and possible action to select one or two nominees for open positions on the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group.
So, we get this every year. We get it in to say, does anybody that we know of want to be nominated for the election to the O-MAG Board? So, this is, does anybody want to do this?
There is a city clerk also.
Do you have to fill it out?
Then, in May, then in May, you'll get another one that you'll choose from the list of nominees who to vote for.
So, the present holders, these are to expire.
Who are we choosing from?
So, we don't have to choose anybody?
You don't have to choose.
But this would be Sarah, like, if you wanted to do it, you said, oh, yeah, yeah, that's what I want to do, then they would nominate you. We would send that to O-MAG, then in May, when the list came out of who you'd vote from, you'd be on it.
Or if Rachel wants to.
That's a great example.
I could nominate, yes.
We're not doing that to Rachel, we love her. Amy?
You don't. Here comes blast, there goes Amy.
I've tabled this. We're tabling, okay. I, I second, I second a tabling.
You can, you can nominate someone who will go on O-MAG's list across the state, you know, along with a whole bunch of other people, or you can let them go forward with their list of a whole bunch of other people with no one from Perkins.
Not that it matters, but I did meet Mr. Craig Stevenson, city manager of Ponca City this last weekend.
I just met Justin Battles, he's so fun.
Oh, he's great, he's been helpful to us in the past, he's really good.
He did hiring, retention, and something, fantastic.
He's super helpful.
He sat, Mr. Stevenson sat at our, our table at the banquet, so, it was nice to meet some...
If you're on this committee, you might get to know more of those people.
I don't want to be on the committee either.
No, no, thank you.
I'm out. Amy's in.
Are we passing?
He's like, not be... Doing no action.
Yes, no action. No action on number twenty-four.
Throwing it up there.
Number twenty-five, consideration, discussion, and possible action to promote one or two candidates to the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, O-MAG. I get no action on this as well. Number twenty-six, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding city manager job performance review process.
Okay, as you all recall, or most of you would recall, we did, I think, a major upgrade and a better job, got a, got a much more thorough and considered contract with Bob when he was, for last year, and his contract will be on the agenda again. In his contract, there is a provision that says that the employer, that's, shall review the employee's job performance at least once annually, with the first review being in February 2024, and then it goes on to say, unless the parties agree otherwise. Well, we being city staff need to have now a plan in place such that in January every year, you will determine the evaluation process that you want to use, the form that you want to use. And then in February every year, you'll do the evaluation so that it can be consistent with the contract and give him any time to get it done before his contract expires. We did not get on that this year, and so I asked Bob if he would, in, in compliance with the terms, agree otherwise to having his evaluation in February this year and do it in March. That way, that gives you this opportunity to determine the evaluation process. And by process, I, I, the only thing I'm providing to help you with that is there's two different evaluation documents that are in your, in your packet. One is simply the one that you, you used or considered, wrote that last year with, with the boxes added, okay? The other one is one that I found from, I thought right here, Dover, New Hampshire. And I just thought, well, that's kind of interesting. So, we threw it out there to give you some ideas. The long one with the black edging around it is from Dover, New Hampshire. I just went in, took their form, and replaced Dover, New Hampshire with Perkins of Oklahoma, essentially. So, thank you Dover, New Hampshire. That doesn't mean that it fits or, you know, your use or anything like that. You would want to decide, you know, if that's the form that, and, and then next year, we'll give this to you sooner and you can look at, you know, maybe even have more time to look at evaluation tools. But this is one of those, you know, everything's more complicated when we're talking about Bob's contract and any, you know, if the word employee, it's all good and we all know what to do. Nope, we don't want to involve staff too much when it's Bob's contract. I don't want to overstep myself, my lane when it's Bob's contract. So, if you got, you, you want to come up with another form, a different evaluation method, it's yours to do. I just provided that to you so that you can give us some guidance as to what you want to use to, and you can all agree on what you want to use as your evaluation tool so we can comply with his contract provision. Any questions? Any questions?
I, I like the one with the rubric form. Well, it's not exactly a rubric, but it's close, closely. Yeah. Do what?
I got one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's close to the teacher one, but not as thorough, but still good. It separates out the topics a little bit better, I think.
Another one with the black edge?
Bob, would you, would you ever want to do a self-evaluation? Fill one out for yourself?
Yeah, that's fine.
And turn it in to the teachers?
I'm just kidding.
No.
Only if you act out and you exceed this every time, he walks the talk.
I didn't hear you. Sorry.
Say how to get in? I said, only if you do this and exceed it, that he walks the talk.
Oh, yeah.
What?
Oh.
Organizational values. He or she walks the talk.
Oh.
Oh, that's fun.
We expect to see that in person.
Walks the talk.
Yeah.
That could be different.
Now, of course, the other.
That one out, is what you're saying? No, leave it.
Right.
Oh, okay. We need to see it. Sure how you're supposed to take that?
I'm going to refrain. Maybe interpret a dance or something.
I would love to see that.
I can't. HR, I can't. I want to say I can't. So many things to say.
I think, I think this one separates, separates it out, different topics. It's less, it's thicker, it's, uh, but it's less wordy than this one.
It's straightforward.
It is straightforward, and then it also leaves room for extra comments, maybe to explain, you know, why you, uh, selected the one you selected. I mean, maybe he was walking the walk, but his feet were hurting that day, so it didn't.
Can we ha, we, can we, can we, can we please subwalks the talk with our mission?
Can we what?
Can we remove walks the talk, whatever that is, with like our mission? Make it more personal to Perkins and the City Manager's office is a professional office and walks the talk is like.
That really sounds like can you walk and talk at the same time?
Or I don't even know. Can you interpretive dance while you work? I don't.
I, I. Page nine, right?
Give us straight some models of organizational values.
I think that it is probably wise to reword that to make sure that everybody understands or is in agreement as to what.
Like, it's funny, we could put it in parentheses because we have this cute little core memory now.
Leads by example?
Just take it out.
Yeah, leads by example is a good one.
Yeah, leads by example.
I like leads by example. I know what it's trying to say. It's just cheesy. Sorry, New Hampshire.
Change it to leads by example.
Leads by example is mine, is an idea, is whatever.
I agree, Sarah.
You want to go back to the other one? Just we're not worried about you walking and talking at the same time. I fall over.
We can absolutely change that.
He is able to control his emotions. Don't break me down like that.
Can I do this as a self-evaluation?
I wouldn't have anyone ever. That's not fair question to ask them.
Well, it says the combined feedback from this multi, greater form and the City Manager's self-evaluation.
On page.
This is the first page of this, the very last paragraph.
Do you anticipate my self-evaluation being completing this form? Or a narrative or some other format or?
What would you prefer?
Well.
How do you provide feedback?
A narrative and the form.
This, this will be easier for you to do.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to include, if you wanted to include comments, you could then put narrative.
Yeah, well, there's comments in here, so.
Decide examples of work that you've done.
So, uh, not that, the, I'm just going by my own.
Two of them at the same time.
I'm just going by my own experience is that we're, we're given the, the state teacher evaluation rubric, what we are totally graded by, the, I mean, it's a lot of pages and it's one through five. And you're supposed to highlight, make comments of how you've reached this stage of the rubric, and we, we have to turn that in every year. And, you know, our boss uses that along with evaluations to give us our rating. And I know, Jason, didn't you say your staff, you do self-evaluations as well?
And then, um, I give a.
And typically, you're going to rate yourself lower than what you really are, but that's just the way we are as good human beings.
Or sometimes.
That was a statement.
What if he uses this form this year? And then, you know, we're, we're, hopefully can I improve the process little by little here by here? And if it doesn't prove to be helpful, you know, we can direct something differently this year. A lot of the, you know, Bob can say, I hate that, and then I can pull over to Dover, New Hampshire or somewhere other city and see what we can find for a self-evaluation.
So on number twenty-six, do we make a motion on that, Tammy?
Can we direct?
Direct.
Staff? To take on if she walks the talk?
They can't direct you.
For a variety of reasons.
Look at your face.
Does she? Need to avoid that if at all possible.
You could, uh.
Do you know why?
Conversation?
Is it stage left?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
Direct the city attorney to use the form.
Clean up the.
I make a motion to direct the city attorney to use the New Hampshire version of the City Manager's Performance Evaluation with the caveat that we take out. She or he walks the talk with disgust.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Justin, did you second? Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
And then, I don't know that I need a motion on this, but I'm assuming that then I get this form to you all and you do it individually and bring it with you this time. It's on the executive session. Or you can choose if you don't want to do it prior to the executive session, we will have copies and you can do it at executive session. I will get it to you and I'll get Bob's self-evaluations and then. Okay. I don't want to feel rushed.
Come on.
I don't want to wait.
Doing any evaluation? She said just hand it to. Executive session.
This one.
Well, we'll have a recess. Not like a damn.
Wasn't she saying do it that day?
We should get it to.
You never mind. Start working on it.
Okay. Okay, are we, hold on. Is there anything we, else we need to hear on that item number? What are we?
Twenty, twenty.
We're getting ready to do twenty-seven.
Could you go straight to new business?
Yeah.
Go straight to new business. Bob is dying over here.
So am I. For other reasons. All right. We're going to move forward to, uh, item agenda thirty, and then we'll, we'll backtrack and go to our number twenty-seven. So new business under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Staff?
Both sales tax measures passed.
Thank you, Perkins.
Parks and Rec passed one sixty-one to twenty-four. Hundred eighty-five people voted.
We did.
And the library passed one fifty-nine to twenty-five.
So some people.
Two less people. Well, actually, somebody didn't check the box. Somebody undervoted, but, yes, so they both passed, what, five, six to one? That's pretty stout.
I apologize for not being my duty today.
Well, you're like.
I was number eleven. We lost.
Did, did I just get in trouble?
No. Racial trouble.
I was, I was working my job, talking to Rachel on the phone. I did.
Dennis was not happy with me, but it was like, we gotta go. I gotta be number one in line.
Oh, my goodness.
I was number two because Marla Kavanaugh was volunteering and she beat me. All right.
So we, no new business?
No new.
Eighty-seven percent of the vote.
Yay.
That's fantastic.
Way to go voters.
Actually, I love it. Okay. Item agenda number twenty-seven. Uh, Tammy, before we go into, uh, executive session, could we take a break?
We have that?
Yeah.
Uh.
Can we switch to this one?
I guess that this though, can we mo, do the motion to move into executive session?
And then we?
And then take a break?
Okay.
And after you do the motion, she's going to just turn off everything.
Or could we go on to city works?
Yeah, can we go to public works?
Public works real quick, or do we need to wait on that?
Sure. Do you want to, then do you want a break before public works?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can go home.
Can you pause that? James, we'll be right back real quick, and then we'll skip to public works before we finish the meeting, okay? Because I'm sure you're ready to go.
I did bring cookies and you can start eating them.
Thank you.
And there, there's some Dennis cookies at the back.
I'll get Dennis cookies. Those are cookies. They were over there, and then I walked down there and gone.
Oh, I was bringing them to you.
Because they're so pretty. Thank you.
Hey, no problem. Thanks for. No.
I just, I was, you was looking at.
I understand your confusion and I was, I was confused and I was frustrated because I couldn't get onto it.
I get you.
Now I have the password, so I can get onto my phone.
That's all it is. That just doesn't make sense, so.
No. You are?
Yeah, I've been on health journey since January.
I know.
All of January, I was eating twenty, twelve hundred calories. And then, so you, did you know that that's not enough calories?
Yeah, I did know that.
Twelve hundred calories a day for a month.
That'll help.
Calories.
Need a couple of those.
I get to eat more. I was on a health journey. I have to get in the bathing suit in May.
She was on a starvation journey.
And it didn't work. Turns out when you have a thyroid condition, your body's just like, hold it.
Yeah, it starts.
We'll hold all of these calories and we'll add them all up. We're going to do public works.
We're doing public work.
We're doing public work.
You won't miss anything.
Okay.
Are we ready? So we're going to call to order the, uh, Perkins Public Works Authority Agenda Regular Meeting Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Amy. Do we need to do a recall to order?
Yeah, because I think he's going to call Public Works to order.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Consideration and action on consent agenda. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Justin?
Four, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, Perkins Public Works Authority Board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Number five, consideration, discussion, and possible action to authorize the City Manager to negotiate and execute a lease agreement with Tanya Lester for the lease of real property located at nine oh five North Saddle Road Perkins for the purpose of Public Works Office space and equipment storage at a cost of one thousand dollars per month.
I will just tell you that a ta, in your packet is a commercial lease. Or post-commercial lease that I drafted. Most of the time what we like to bring to you are when we bring a contract to you, we like to bring one where the other person made the offer. So a contract is an offer of acceptance and consideration. In other words, each side got something. We would much prefer that the offer be made by the other side, signed, ready to go, and then bring it to you. You accept it. We have a contract. In this one, it's a little different because this is the offer essentially that, that Bob intends to take to the landowner. And, um, she has not yet, my, my understanding, accepted this offer. So that's why we worded it the way we did on the, uh, on the agenda as far as, um, that he, he, there may be still room some to go, to negotiate some terms of this lease that you would. This is would be, is kind of, is the offer to start with. Just to kind of tell them the structure, you can tell them what is, why you want to do this lease or what you're looking at. The, uh, Public Works lease for the property.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
The store stuff?
I don't know what she said, but the, it'd be a building on Sadler and it will, we don't, we have acquired a lot more equipment that needs to be stored inside. It'll last a lot longer. We don't have the storage space. We also don't have adequate office space or an adequate restroom at the west shop. So this will be a big boost for morale and public works, and it will allow us to store equipment inside. There's a future, um, thought in the near future, in the next two or three years probably, to try to build a new west shop. It's going to depend on several variables. The biggest one being funding, but, um, so my goal would be that this would be a two-year lease, two- to three-year lease. So we can possibly source some land, build a bigger shop that we could do, that would be suited for a maintenance person to be in all the time and, uh, as we grow, so. But the building's empty and it's in good shape. It's heated and cooled.
It has a bathroom?
Has a bathroom. Um, it was a, a wood shop in the back, so it's a, we can put, um, several of our smaller pieces of equipment in there. Some of the stuff that we've recently got on grants, um, and it'll, it'll just help the longevity and all that. Oh, I, I think the, um, I think the landlord would agree to the base rent of a thousand. I did talk to a real estate appraiser and he looked at some, um, comparative rentals, which were difficult because there's not really a comp in Perkins. And Stillwater buildings like this would go for twelve to fourteen hundred a month. Which is why I came up with around a thousand. Try to make it fair for both parties.
Is, is the location adequate or is it, is that, that building's open?
The, the location's adequate. I mean, it's just north of the Cimarron Valley Church on Sadler. But it's, uh, it's the only location that I know of that would do what we need it to do, um, at this time in Perkins.
I figured that's what we're looking at.
Commissioners, anything?
I'll make a motion to authorize the City Manager to negotiate and execute a lease agreement with Tanya Lester for the lease of real property located at nine oh five North Saddle Road Perkins for the purpose of Public Works Office space and equipment storage at a cost of a thousand dollars per month.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Number six, new business under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Any more new business? No. I make a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting for the Perkins Public Works Authority Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Thank you, James.
Thank you so much. You too.
Hey, James.
Stay safe. Stay safe.
Tammy, are you ready?
Yes.
So. Back to, do we, we don't have to do anything for you, back to the regular meeting, do we?
No.
Okay. Number twenty-seven, motion to enter executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven. B point four, to discuss the city's claims and possible litigation against O G and E regarding Main Street decorative lighting. So, can you?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Can I hold it?
Who did the motion? Did you get it?
The mayor. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah? I'm sorry, vice mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Sarah's right.
And Justin?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. We're live.
Are you going to make a motion?
You want to gavel? I'll get you a gavel.
No, don't give her that.
Have something to say.
Number twenty-eight?
Oh, wait, wait. Sorry, Rachel. Yes, we're on.
Motion to exit executive session and reconvene in open session, Amy.
Um, you're, is there a second?
I have a second.
Way over my head. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Item agenda number twenty-nine, consideration, discussion, and possible action as a result of executive session regarding the city's claims and possible litigation against O G and E regarding Main Street decorative lighting.
I make a motion to direct staff as discussed.
Second.
Direct. Was that you, Justin?
The city attorney and the city manager?
I direct the city manager and the city attorney as discussed.
Proceed.
Proceed as discussed.
Didn't have the right adjective.
That's good. I just, I just wanted to not, to not use the term direct staff.
Oh, yeah, leave it to you. Gotcha.
That's the only reason I was saying that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Item agenda number thirty-one, I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's regular meeting for the city of Perkins Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty-two thousand and forty-four.
I'll second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
That was great. Okay, I'm turning this off.
That's actual proof right there. You just don't take stuff too seriously sometimes.